Use your recording for minutes.
Yes.
Okay, cuz I know she's had problems, I think, before getting the recording or what have you, but.
Who has?
Beth, I think, has before.
Well, we are recording this one and we're recording a couple of backups as well, so I think we should be, I hope we're all set.
Okay, alright, hold on, everyone, I just have to get the.
Harley, can you tell us who's on?
To who?
Can you tell us who is on the Zoom meeting?
Um, well, yes, um, this, this Zoom meeting, you mean?
Yes, if I may, through the chair.
Oh, through the chair, yes.
Ask the question.
Just give me a second, alright?
Okay.
I'm looking for Beth's link. Alright, so at the meeting, we have Carol. We have Lance, is it Ju- Julie?
Yes.
Okay, we have Bill, the troublemaker Bill, we have Chaz, we have Lori, we have T Cam, we have Kim, and we have Mike.
Thank you.
Alright, just bear with me for a second, I'm trying to activate Beth's. Link.
I apologize to everyone, I'm in the car on my iPad.
That's dedication.
Chaz, do you happen to have a meeting? Alright, so this should be a pretty, pretty quick meeting. Alright, so I've called the meeting to order, why don't we just go through a quick roll call because of, we're here virtually? Carol?
Carol Hofstis.
Mike?
Mike Verosco.
Okay, and then we have Lance McNally, so we have three people for tonight's meeting that's currently on the board. I don't have any additions or deletions, so let's go, has everyone had, so Carol, have you had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes, I did review the minutes and I am fine with them.
Okay, and so am I. I guess probably because, I'm sure, Mike, have you looked at the minutes?
Yes, I looked at them earlier, they were sent by email.
Okay, do you have any comments on them?
None.
Okay, and I have none, so there's three of us, so Carol, do you vote, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April, what was the date?
Sixteenth.
April the sixteenth.
April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, and, and do I have a second, Mike?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you so much, and please bear with me, I'm trying to get a little bit organized, it's been a very, very hectic day for me. Alright, alright, so we have one point four, reorganization of the planning board. So, gosh, I think what I might do is, since we have Carol as a new member and we have Mike as a new member, I guess maybe defer that until at such time that we have more on the board, unless there's any object, objectives or objections. And so with that, so Lori, I know that you're interested in the associate position, let me just ask you, I assume that you're not interested as the associate in terms of moving on to a board position to fill a vacancy?
Or are you? No, actually, I'm interested in the, the empty seat. That's interested in the associate position.
Okay, so Lori, are you interested, when you say the empty seat, to basically serve on the planning board on one of the empty seats?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, so under a, sort of, I guess, a procedural type move, I believe that we can move forward with naming someone an associate, and we're only allowed to have one associate, and then we have to then move that associate into a full seat, and then at that time, we can name another associate. Does that, do you understand, Lori?
I'm not sure of the procedure that you speak of.
Well, we can only, we can only have one associate at a time.
Right, so at, at this point in time, it's going to be Julie, I think that.
But, but let me, let me ask Julie here, so Julie can speak, Julie, are you, are you interested in being an associate? Or do you are interested in being on the board as a sitting member?
I was interested in being an associate member.
Okay, so, we can only have one associate member at a time, and then that associate member can be moved on to a board position. So I.
Lori, you go first.
Alright, go ahead, Lori, do you have something?
Hey, um. First of all, congratulations, Chaz, on becoming selectman, so I believe it's, I, I may, you may, I may have to wait, actually, I think it has to be, I don't know the procedure, I really don't, but my mind is saying that Chaz's seat became vacant, I'm gonna have Chaz explain this, and then we would have to wait, the, the planning board would have to post his position. Currently, the only posting is for the associate position, I am not applying for the associate position. It just said, cover it.
Here, here's my understanding, and someone, Bill, if you want to jump in, or Chaz, my understanding is that an associate to the planning board can be recommended for a full seat. And so that is how the seat is filled. I can't hear you, Lori. Chaz, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah.
I mean, I mean, as far as I know, we can only have one associate, and the associate position upon a vacancy on the board is eligible to move into a full-time seat, that's how I came onto the plan.
And Beth did explain that to me, so on my volunteer form, I did put associate and open seat.
Exactly, so what we, yes, so what we.
Why go first?
What we can do, and, and Julie, and this, I mean, so what we can do is that the board can vote to make you an associate member, and the board can vote to recommend to the selectmen that you're appointed a full-time position, but not until such time that the Board of Selectmen agree with that, are you on the planning board. And we can have only one associate at a time, so what we need to do is, we need to first act on you, and then we will, after you are moved on to a full seat, then we would move forward with Julie for an associate position.
Okay, I now understand that.
Okay?
Yeah.
And so Julie, do you have, alright, so let me just go start with Julie, do you have any questions for the board?
Uh, no, I understand what you said, that's, that's fine with me, if that's how we're gonna roll.
Okay, so can I have a motion to appoint Lori Schifferin as the associate planning board member?
Yeah, Lance, I can make a motion to that Lori Schifferin becomes the associate member.
Do you second that, Carol?
Yes, I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor, Carol?
Yes.
Uh, Mike?
Uh, Mike Verosco, yes.
Lance McNally, yes, and then can I have a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that Lori Schifferin be appointed to a vacant seat?
Yeah, Lance, I'll make the motion that Lori Schifferin, that we go to the Board of Selectmen to appoint her to an open seat.
And, and do you second that, Carol?
Yes, I'll second that.
Alright, so how do you vote, Carol?
Carol Hofstis, yes.
Lance, uh, Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. Alright, so then I will take the action item to talk with Beth to get that on the Board of Selectmen agenda, and then Julie at our next meeting, then we look forward to appointing you as an associate, okay?
Great, thank you.
Alright, alright, so Kim, are you still with us?
I am.
Okay, so, Kim, update on the master plan, how's everything?
Uh, good, so we actually have a meeting coming up this Friday morning.
Okay.
Um, and we have two chapters that I'm gonna be sending your way, circulation and transportation.
Oh, great.
And historic and cultural resources.
Okay.
Um, we had an opportunity to preview the maps with Karen, she had joined our meeting, and there's a few little adjustments that we're making, so it was nice to have sort of a sneak preview of what they're doing. You know, to, to make those sort of universal adjustments with the next ones coming out.
Okay.
And then I think the, you know, the big stumbling block is, as I'm sure you know from my emails and what's been going on is whether we're actually gonna get an update from FXM or not, so we'll have to weed through some of that, and then we'll be working with Karen, at first, she wanted us to wait till it was all done, but once you have all looked at the chapters, we're gonna send them over to MRPC section by section, and she'll just make sure that, you know, the numbers that they use are the numbers that we're using and that everything is flowing from one chapter to the next.
Okay, super, is there anything that you need from us right now, Kim?
I don't, I, I, I think the only thing I will need to know is, there might have been a little glitch in the communication when you guys were going over the water chapter, I didn't realize that you might have wanted us on that call, do you want us on the call when you review the next chapters?
I mean, I think that if, if we have any interaction with any other town board, that, that I think would be good that you were there.
Okay, so just let me know when you might, once I send those over, I'll get with Beth, so that we know when those might be scheduled, so that we can have someone onboard, either myself or the person that actually contributed the most to those chapters.
Okay, super, and I really look forward to, and, and when you send us the other two chapters, you know, give them to Beth, and then just basically say that you would like to receive comment by the planning board and give us a date, you know what I mean?
Okay.
And then that way, and I assume, do you want them like in, with track changes?
Track changes, yeah, that would be really helpful.
Okay, and then that way, if you say, okay, here are these two chapters, please provide us comments within two weeks or whatever the date you wanna pick, then that way, it sort of drives us to get it done.
Okay, that sounds great.
Does anyone from the planning board have any other questions for Kim?
No.
Okay. Alright, safe routes to, alright, so Kim, you're welcome to stay on or you're welcome to leave, but I wanted to get you pretty quick so that we, you know, I don't destroy your evening.
I, I appreciate that, and I guess, Lance, now with Chaz, moving on to the selectmen, will you have another sort of formal representative or just sort of drop-in representation at our meetings now?
Uh, let me ask, you know, either Carol or Mike, if any of you are interested in sort of participating in the master plan committee meetings.
Yeah, I can do it.
Or Carol, or Carol.
I was gonna say, Lance, anyone is, is, of course, welcome to drop in at any time, I just didn't know if you were gonna formally appoint, or if it would just be drop-in, and of course, whatever is, is done by the members of the planning board is fine on our end.
Uh, you know, we've always done it on a, we never did formally appoint Chaz unless I'm mistaken, I mean, Chaz sort of took the initiative to, to get involved. So we'll do it the same way, but what I would like to see, and I'll talk to Beth about this, I would like to see that at least one of us, even if it's on a rotating basis, participate.
Okay, yeah, maybe now where it's, well, if Beth's, I, I don't know her hours on Friday, if it falls into her workday at all on Friday.
Uh, Beth works seven days a week.
That's true, but it might be more convenient for her for our morning meetings than the evening meetings, cuz she already has yours in the, in, in the evening, but just, just let us, just let us know.
Okay, and when's your next meeting, Kim?
Uh, this Friday morning at eight thirty.
Okay, alright, okay, so with Beth gone, I may, I may need some help here, do you have any update, Chaz, on the safe routes to school?
Um, I do, I know that I have been assisting Beth, and she's creating a share folder for all the members for the safe routes to school, I submitted over what I had in my file, I need to talk to Ronnie to see if there was anything that Ronnie had before I got on to Safe Roots, and then you, you will, as far as that point is concerned, then either appoint her or ask for a volunteer to continue. At this point, both, both schools, Hawthorne and Spalding, have signed agreements that have been submitted to Safe Roots to School. Their partis, their participation is not gonna happen until this fall, but I would like to be able to do a warm handshake with Rachel, who is our Safe Roots to School representative, with whoever's gonna be taking over, so that, you know, we can finalize the deal, I guess.
Okay. Alright, on the three point three, sort of combined three point three and three point four, our MVP grant was due on May the sixth, so that got submitted, and I know Beth was working feverishly, and a lot of others contributed to what we needed to do to in- increase the content that we, that, that was recommended by Adria prior to our, you know, for our submission.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, I can speak to that too.
Okay.
Um, as part of the core team for that, Beth had acquired a lot of letters of recommendation, which was a very good thing. The submission, like you said, was on May sixth, and at that point, we're waiting for Adria to, she's the one that's gonna be keeping an eye out on where the process is, because of the favorability of our last application, and the weaker areas that were pointed out to us, Beth straight strengthened it with the letters of support, we also had a lot of community involved in regards to, if, if we go on to the, the next one, to the, the bikeability, walkability, we used pieces of that to, towards the grant to say that the community was, was joining in with us, and then our, our wish to start having boards and, and committees be working a little more collaboratively together, that was also added into the piece of that, so that all was submitted, and then Adria will give us an update when she hears something.
Okay, and anything to sort of add on the bikeability, anything additional?
Um, not necessarily, where it is right now, I know that Beth will need some, some help with, with going forward with that, the, the main.
Okay.
This time was on the MVP, you know, the, as you know, we had the walkability study, when was it, it was on the first, on Saturday, we had MRPC led that, we had a lot of good input that came from the community, there has been some, some of the community that came, that we did get some information, I know that Beth wanted to reach out on an individual basis to see if they wanted to continue with being, providing us with input on what they think as far as that particular grant is concerned, but I think Beth will be able to fill you guys in on your next meeting.
Okay, alright, moving on to correspondence, four point one, so I first of all wanna personally congratulate Chaz on his select, his appointment as selectman, and with regret to accept his letter of resignation. But I did want to inform the board that Chaz is now our official liaison to the selectmen's office, so we still have Chaz in, just in another capacity.
Correct. So does that mean you're accepting my letter of recommendation, uh, resignation?
I don't know, I'm still thinking about it. But no, I really wanna pers, personally thank you for the time that you've put into the planning board, you know, your, your advice and, and, and everything was just, you know, fantastic, and as well as Lori's as well, even though that will have Lori rejoining us, but I really appreciate the, the, the input that the two of you have had.
And, and we did get everything passed in the last town meeting, too.
Yes, that is, you know, it's very good, I wish, I mean, I wish I could have been there, but I was in, in Rhode Island working, so. And it was cold out on the water, I'll tell you that. Um, alright, we've already addressed, I think, four point two in terms of the volunteer response forums from Lori and Julie, and just so everyone else knows that Sue did submit one, but had indicated her preference for finance, you know, ahead of planning. Alright, four point three, code of conduct, conduct for boards and commissioners, so are you able to access the link that Beth sent out?
Let me check, there's, I had a bunch of emails going back and forth.
Don't you, I, I just wanted to make you aware of the fact, and also to Lori and to Carol that there is a code, a free training webinar on May the twelfth, from eleven thirty to one o'clock, and of course, this applies to everyone, on code of conduct for town boards and committees. And so in that link, there's the registration details, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of it, because it's in two days, alright?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Yep, okay.
So I just want to ask if there, if there is any participation from residents who want to bring something forward? Do you have like an other, or?
I don't have anything on the agenda, nor am I aware of any residents that wanna bring something forward.
Okay, well, I asked Bill to be here, and because he was at town meeting on Saturday.
Okay.
And he had offered an amendment to fifty-five, to the age-restricted zoning by law amendment that, that we, that to get voted, and I, it got me thinking, and I thought it was actually a very good thing, if you'll indulge me for a moment, I spent two hours today on what's called Public Policy Coordinating Committee at the National Association of Realtors, and I'm on that committee, I represent Massachusetts and the residential specialists on that committee. It is made up of planning board members throughout the country as well as realtors in different positions, appraisers, whatnot, all that are in the industry, and there was a presentation from the Biden administration today, and we had, there's at least twenty topics that were under, under discussion, and ninety-five percent of what we did today had to do with affordable housing and the lack of inventory of housing in this country. We are, in the last two years, five hundred thousand units were added to the inventory in the United States. If we keep up the addition of five hundred thousand per year, it will take us ten years to catch up to where we should have been today. So not only are they requesting that communities are more open and accommodating to the development of housing, at some point, it's gonna be a mandate. On the other hand, they talked about the tax, the new tax code, which the National Association of Realtors is going to fight, because the tax code, in essence, makes housing more costly. It's more cost to the developers from the local to the national level. When that happens, the developer is going to pass that fee along to the consumer, thereby making it less affordable rather than more affordable, so it was like, oh, everything that was coming at us today and was coming out of the government, the White House, is contradicting itself. So I'm just letting you know, it's coming down the pipe, we as school officials need to be more constant, cognizant of what is going on. Mike is a mortgage officer, lender, representative, and so he's well aware of what is going on in the industry and what hurdles we face in having the buyers obtain financing. They also talked about VA today, and that's, that's another, I could give you a whole quarter cent today, but I, I won't, but Mike, I wanna talk to you about what they told us about VA, what they told us about flood insurance. And we need to really make some strides, the bottom line of what I'm saying is, I asked Bill to come because I believe that his amendment that he presented will help us with smaller lots, and everything in, in our town, remember, is, has to be under border health requirements, so we're not asking to hurt the aquifer, we're not asking to do anything wrong, we're just ask, like you, to listen to his amendment as, as a board, as a planning board, and then hopefully, you will put this on the next meeting, and the planning board can discuss it, and we can start with public hearings on that particular amendment, and we can actually present that in the fall, cuz it's, it's an amendment to what we already passed on Saturday, so.
I guess, I guess I'm confused, so did Bill's, was Bill's, whoops, did Bill amend, make an amendment at the town meeting?
It did not pass, it did not pass, they voted the bylaw as we, as the planning board had recommended it. But it is an opportunity to do something, and I'll give you, for instance, Central Plaza. Now, in the case of Central Plaza, oh, another thing that they talked about was taking commercial buildings, industrial buildings, vacant buildings that are not now being used, and turning it into residential housing. So it's, they want us to look at everything.
Let me, let me stop you, I think that this is something that we need to have as an agenda item that is posted before, I would like to go into serious discussion from the board.
Okay, well, I, I would have, if I had been looking at the agenda, I might have asked to, to add it under items on. Okay, well, I I would have, if I had been looking at the agenda, I might have asked to to add it under um items unforeseen.
Yeah.
You know, before the posting, um so I understand what you're saying, I just um.
Yeah, and 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 you know that, you know. Yeah, and 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 as you know, the the board is is always open to to listen, um you know, on matters. But um I think something as significant as this is that um it would be good to have a a full board and something that we can put in a work session.
Okay.
Alright.
I appreciate, um, yeah, I appreciate you letting me speak on it.
Oh, you're welcome.
Bill being here too, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Bill.
It's okay.
Alright, um alright, let me moving back on, um alright, so I covered the um code of contact conduct, and if anyone wishes to go and they cannot access the link, please let me know and then I will um um get it to you, alright? And um alright, hold on. Alright. Alright, that's what I see, um I can't really find what um community, so um Chaz, do you know anything about the Community Compact Connector Grant Announcements?
Um, this was a document that had all of the available grants or the 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 new grants that were out there.
Okay.
Um Beth just added a link to uh um to those, I think she, at least she asked me to to look it over and if I had any comments to let her know.
Okay, um any, any comments that you want to share with the um with the board on that?
Uh as far as what I looked at, some of them are something that I feel that the planning board does need to look at.
Okay.
Um, there, there may be a couple to enhance what you already have going now.
Okay.
But I would encourage everybody to take a look at that, that document, if you don't have that link, let Beth know and then she can send you the document.
Okay, because I really um, yeah, because I'm really not um seeing it in the information that she had sent to me. Okay. Alright, draft priority habitat for rare species available for public comment, May third through um July the third, um let me look at it. Are pursuant to the Mass Endangered Species Act, um they're implementing um Alright, so um I think this is probably that that we all have to um sort of put on our action list for our next meeting is to basically review it, and Beth did provide a link to it, but I only got it six hours ago, so I haven't had a chance to review it. So it probably makes sense for us as a board to um continue that on our um review it before our next meeting. Alright, then let me go to four point six notices from others town, this is where I really miss Chaz. I gotta get back to it.
If it's any consolation, I now do it for the Board of Selectmen.
Um alright, uh so there's a public hearing for the town of um Pepperell. And this is uh on May the seventeenth, and it's an application for a special permit to allow the installation of a permanent double-sided sign forty-eight feet by nine ninety-six inches high. Oh, there's nothing like a billboard. Um town of Pepperell, a notice of a decision um on um Six Scotch Pine Farm Way. And um I I I can't see where it's basically um saying what the decision is concerning. Alright, um just basically a decision on uh Four South Pine Way. Uh zoning board of appeals from Groton. Oh rats, I just hit a button and everything got small. Hold on, I gotta get back to it. Alright, zoning board of appeals uh in Groton, request for a special permit to allow the alteration of a non-conforming structure. That's not um that exciting. Zoning Board of Appeals, again for Groton, um and they're gonna hear it on May the twelfth, and it is concerning uh for a variance, for a setback, for a chicken coop, if anyone's interested in that. Again, uh ZBA from Groton. For the operation of an Airbnb. Again, ZBA in Groton, boy, they're busy. Uh to allow the construction of a non-conforming structure. Another town of Groton, and this is notice of a decision on a special permit um for Shepley Hill Capital Partners LLC, um doesn't give me any details on what the special permit was. Um and then we have.
The housing development that they're doing up there.
Okay, um and then we have town of Groton, notice of decision for an approval of a definitive plan. Um same, same um same parties, and that's what I have for other towns. Um unfortunately, I think since Beth is not here, we'll just have to have her, catch up with her on her administrative report. And then our next planning board meeting is um tentatively scheduled for May the twenty-fourth. So um if everyone could take some some time and look at the um uh habitat map for for on that. Um does anyone else have any matters that they want to bring to uh the board's attention?
I I'd like to make a comment, sir, if that's okay.
Yes.
Um, I just wanna in, um I want to say congratulations to Mike to get on the board, uh and I want to offer myself that if he wants to give me a call and talk to me about what I've done with the planning board and if I can help him out with anything, I definitely want to open that up to him. Uh and I also want to thank Lori, um Lori and I have worked together on many, many projects, but a lot of work that that um that I've done with the planning board, I just want to say that Lori has been an integral part of it and she's a very valuable member. Uh and I'm glad to see that she's coming back to the planning board, but those are the two things, and Carol, rock on.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, with that, can I have him, uh and so in our next meeting, since we'll have um uh Lori with us, um and so we have a four-person board, then I think uh it probably makes more sense uh have our uh elections for officers. Because that way we can uh put Lori on a position.
Yeah. Um, okay, so you said that the next meeting was May twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Alright, I don't come back until the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So, um when is the next selectmen's meeting, Chaz?
Tomorrow.
Oh, so this motion will go to them tomorrow?
I can try to put it on the um forty-eight hour thing.
Um, unforeseen, okay, um.
If the chair would mind me doing that.
Not at all. But do you want to take that action item so I don't give Ronnie a call?
I can do that, sure.
Okay.
So here's my thing, um I think I'll have to be sworn in before I can be um on board, sh- should the selectmen choose to appoint me for the planning board at their next meeting. Um, I would need to get sworn in, and I think I even asked Beth today if there was some way that I could zoom into or FaceTime with Kathy Spoford and just take the oath, um and then sign when I come back. Then I would participate via Zoom.
Alright, so let me stop you, Lori, um um when are you leaving?
I'm, I'm gone, I'm in the car now.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm in New York.
Alright.
This is dedication, I'm going over a bridge on a highway. With my dog driving so that I can participate on the planning board.
Okay.
So I don't come back, my flight is a midnight flight on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Uh, mister, mister chair, may I also add to this, um I'm a little concerned about if you have a vacancy, don't you have to post it for ten days before it gets filled?
The associate has been posted since April twenty-ninth.
Oh, I see, so you went to the opposed, okay, well, we also have another on BOS meeting on the eighteenth. So we have one tomorrow.
That doesn't matter, Chaz, I don't come back until the twenty.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying that so we have enough time to get it on the on the agenda, either the eleventh or the eighteenth.
Chaz, Lori's concern is, is can she be sworn in virtually?
Can you ask that question tomorrow, Chaz?
I can, I can ask it to Kathy.
Well, actually, I'm gonna ask town council, how about that?
Alright, that's even better.
I I probably will get a correct answer.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, okay.
Okay.
Otherwise, um I'm not valid until after I'm sworn in.
Correct. Okay, um with that, whoops, I got a chat, someone did a chat, I hope it's it's not anything negative. Oh, it's Kim, I need to be off by seven, well, we made that happen. Alright, uh uh can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Lance.
Alright, all in favor, all of Carol?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Okay, Lance, yes, and and I also really want to congratulate Carol and Mike for joining the board.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, talk to you later. Alright, bye-bye.
Have a good day, guys.
Have a good night.